Good evening and welcome to the Tappus County zoning board of appeals. It's November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Do it all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Valley of the United States of America. To the republic that was established, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For any of you unfamiliar with, oh, well, first of all, Christine's absence. The rest of the board members are here. Our alternate will be a full voting member tonight. We have a quorum. We can begin. For anyone unfamiliar with the proceedings here before the zoning board of appeals, there's an agenda up here on the corner. Each item will be taken in its order on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, be sworn, and describe their application. There may be some questions from the board members. And then the public is welcome to comment on the application. Likewise, any testimony before the board is under oath. As each application is finished, if the record's complete, it'll be closed. We'll move to the next application. At the end of each application, and the records closed on each application, we'll go into deliberation. At that time, no further evidence is taken, and we'll deliberate and have a vote. You can either stay until the end of the meeting to find out the decision, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning. With that, let's begin. Item number one, five sixty-six Vassar Road. Why don't you state your name? And I, you were under oath the last meeting, right? Okay, so you're still under oath. So what's changed since the last time?
You told me to bring some different fence options, which I submitted to Sonia. I don't know if you guys reviewed them. So basically, I'm looking to get a six-foot fence off of Vassar Road and a six-foot fence off of Malmrose Terrace.
So my recollection from the last meeting is that I made a suggestion that you've come back with some alternate fence designs that were either lower, shorter, or more open.
Okay.
From what you've submitted, I don't see that.
Okay, well, I gave.
Did I miss something?
Well, I was under the assumption that vinyl wasn't accepted, so I also submitted wood. I spoke with my wife, and I think you suggested maybe around the corner to drop it down to a four-foot fence off of Malmrose Terrace. So it goes from a six-foot, drops down to a four-foot at Malmrose Terrace, which we're okay with.
So my recollection was that we were more concerned about the six feet in the front yard rather than what would be, what you would typically consider the side yard.
Okay.
But I think even more important was a more open look to the fencing.
So are you saying something slotted?
Slotted, or like wrought iron, or something that doesn't give the effect of a, of a, of a wall-in compound.
Okay. I mean, something slotted? I mean, the whole thing is, we were leaving today, and it's just a standstill of cars, you know, in front of, in front of my property. So if it's slotted, where's the privacy? That's, you know, I have two, two young girls and my wife. I just don't understand why, why you think a closed fence just on one part of my corner lot would make it look like a compound when I'm, when I'm trying to drop it down to a four-foot fence, which is something that you guys recommended.
Right, so we wanted something lower and something more open.
In, in front of Vassar? I mean, so I went to a fence company, and they told me that a six-foot fence is a standard size. If you get anything smaller than that, then it has to be custom, and it's going to be more money as well. So, I mean, I already spent fifteen hundred dollars on, on my survey. I, I mean, if you want me to get wood, that's more, that's less, but now I'm going to have to stain it. If you want me to get a four-foot fence, it's going to be more money. I just.
I think, I think that it's unlikely that you're going to get a six-foot fence along Vassar Road.
Okay.
So if you, if you want some fencing, my suggestion was and remains that you find something lower and perhaps something less imposing than a, than a solid fence.
Five-foot fence? Because, I mean, at this point, you know, it's, I'm, I'm five-eleven. People can just clearly look over into my yard. You know, the road, I'm on a little bit of an incline. People can just look into my yard. And privacy is the number one thing, and also safety. So, you know, I don't want anybody to just be, to be able to either scale it easily or one of them to just be able to, you know, scale it easily when they're older. That's, you know, these are my two, these are my two main concerns. And I understand what you call a compound, you know, no disrespect. But what you call a compound, for me, I call an oasis. And I don't want, I just want the safety of my family and the privacy of my family. I don't understand why a vinyl fence makes it look like a compound. I see chain link, I see three, three and a half chain-linked fences, and to me, that looks more like a compound, to be honest with you. So I, that's something that I, I think that, that's something that, where we disagree, to be completely honest with you. And I'm not trying to argue, but I just feel like that, this is important to me, so.
Do you think you'll be able to provide some alternate styles that, that come into what we're looking for?
I mean, I can.
I, I don't know how else to say that it's, I think it's highly unlikely that you're going to be granted a six-foot fence along Vassar Road.
Okay, so, I mean, I have a brochure with me. If you'd like, I can approach with some slotted ideas. Maybe, I mean, it's, they're minimal, but it still provides privacy, we believe, and it's slotted.
Okay, you could submit those to the board.
Okay, can I approach, or just later? Okay.
So these are still solids. This doesn't really change the effect that much. So I'm, I think that the board would grant something that's more open. I understand what you're looking for, but I don't think that you're going to be able to get what you're looking for for complete privacy with a, with a solid fence.
So what I'm getting at is, you're saying this privacy is out of the question?
With a six-foot, your, your attempt.
You prefer to see into my yard. That's, that's the only reason I'm getting at, to be honest with you. I don't understand.
I think it's, I think it's highly unlikely that you're going to be granted a six-foot solid fence along Vassar Road. So if you want to come up with something else that satisfies some of the other of your demands, that might, that might work?
Okay. I mean, I, I was just going to adjourn this, or?
Yeah, if you need more time.
Okay, yeah, because, I mean, I, okay, yeah, I guess you guys will be adjourned.
Well, let's see if any of the other board members have any other comments. Art?
I agree with the chairman. We know we're fighting a battle further up the street on three seventy-six. That place is a compound up to the old Paula's Public House. If you go up there and look at that fence, that's been there for years, and we're trying to get it removed.
Okay, oh, what was the, what was the address? Just so I can take, take a look if you don't mind.
Make a left, go up Vassar Road, and go past the intersection of Spackenkill. And keep going, it's about three-quarters of a mile on your left. It's across the old Paula's Public House.
Paula's Public House?
He's agreed to, to take, to cut the fence down.
Have to give him an idea.
Three and a half feet, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what you think, in, in your minds, what a compound looks like. That's, that's just what I'm trying to figure out.
That's a good illustration.
Right, it's completely fenced in, you can't see in or out of the yard.
Okay, okay, but if I were to drop it down, so I have two front yards, right? And if I were to drop it down, so one front yard is four feet, you could see in, but you just can't see from Vassar Road, which is the busiest road. Like I said, we just left today, and it was a standstill of cars. I just, I, with all due respect, I just don't understand why aesthetics is more important than the safety of children in your community. I just, to be honest with you.
Part of the, I think part of our concern is that if you're coming out of your street, Malmrose, can you make a left out of there on the Vassar? I don't think so.
Ah, you can't, you can't make left out of there.
You can't?
No, you cannot.
But coming in, you can make a right coming in, correct? You can't, so what good's the street?
No, you, you can, you can, you can't make a right, and you can't make a left. School buses only, yes.
There's a, there's a line of sight concern, there's various concerns, but again, as, as the chairman says, our, if our legal attorney would like to step in.
I, I mean.
Our, you know, our rules are pretty straightforward that we have to abide by, because if we say okay for you, then the next person's going to come in and we're going to have to okay for them too.
Okay, um, I, I understand that, but the way the fence is from my property, it's not past the easement. And actually, right along Vassar Road, there's a lot of trees that are on the easement that, when I bought the property, were already there. From what I understand, the easement is not my responsibility, it's not on my property. And those trees actually block more of a line of sight from traffic leaving Vassar Road than my fence would, than my six-foot fence would. And it's not like the six-foot fences blocking it, it's going to be parallel with Vassar Road. So I, I, I don't understand that argument. Like I said, I can go to Spackenkill across from Paula's Public House and see what you guys think a compound is. I just don't understand why.
And if I may, there's one other fence you might want to look at. If you go up to Spackenkill to, where's the slotted fence? Just before Higgin Town, actually, is that, is that Old Farms Road?
Old Farms Road.
If you look at Old Farms Road on your left, there's a white vinyl fence that I believe is backslotted. So each board is offset, front, back, front, back.
Okay.
That's better than a solid white fence, but it still gives you all the privacy you could ever want.
Okay.
Six, the six foot's going to be a problem. That's, that's going to be your biggest problem, I think.
And because you believe that it looks like a compound? Is that, is that it?
Yes.
Just to make that clear, that's it? Okay.
All this, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
Nothing further.
I, I, no, nothing further.
All right, I, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know there's a, there's a no-right turn sign for, for traffic on Vassar, except for school buses. And you, if I understood you correctly, you said you can't come out and make a right turn to get out of your, to get out of your street onto Vassar. Is that correct?
When you're going down Vassar and Malmrose is on your right-hand side, you cannot make a right turn into Malmrose. And coming out of Malmrose, trying to go onto Vassar, you can't make a left-hand turn.
Can you make a right-hand turn?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's what I didn't know.
Yes, okay, sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
It's okay.
Okay.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone on, on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? Yeah, all this.
I, sir, I really would encourage you to go look at the one at Old Farms, the, um, the slotted one.
Okay.
And I've seen it in a variety of forms. I have no idea of.
Height.
Of cost, but it does, it's not solid, but there is privacy. And the other thing is, on Vassar, everybody's going by, what are they, forty-five?
The, well, rush hour, they're not, rush hour, there's standstill traffic. I mean, I literally heard someone on a phone conversation with the window rolled down.
It's, it's in Wofford Road.
I, I understand that, and that's why you have to understand my frustration with this, to be honest with you. I mean, it's not, I, I think what I'm asking for isn't out of the realm of, I'm not being crazy. You know, it's, but I'll, I'll go, you said Old Farms Road?
Correct.
Okay, and that's Spackenkill?
Yes, if you're going from Red Oaks Mills, it's on the left. And, and there's another farm, there's another fence on the other side of that road where we had to deal with a height variation.
Okay.
Different style, so actually, both of them may be helpful for you to look at.
Okay, does, does a white vinyl bother anybody here while we're, while I'm here? Should I get something that looks like a fake wood, or do you want a pink?
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that that's the issue whatsoever. I think it's just the whole stockade thing that, that we're all kind of working to come to closure on.
Okay, all right, I'll take a look, and then, like I said, I'll, I have brochures here I'll talk to, I have to talk to, and then if you want to adjourn this for, I don't know, next month, whenever the meeting is, I'm okay with that.
All right, again, if anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone, and so I'll move to adjourn this to the December ninth meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those are favoring to go by by eye?
Eye.
I'm with, I'm sorry.
We made it clear what height we want him to, you know?
Thought I made it pretty clear.
Yeah, you said, you said six foot is out of the, out of the realm of possibility. That's, that's what.
I just wanted to make sure that he understood that that was, you know.
Okay, what, so I don't want to waste anyone's time again. I know that it's three and a half feet is the maximum, and then obviously, I applied for the variance for six foot. I'm not getting that. What is the maximum height that you would be willing to give me?
I think it will depend on the, the type of fence that you come up with.
Okay, so if I get a slotted fence, like five feet, four feet? I mean, you know, I, am I going to have to keep coming back and forth with these two kids missing dinner now, like, I, you know? I mean, I'm frustrated, I'm not going to lie. I'm frustrated, so.
Okay. Back with something that you're comfortable with, that you think fits within our parameters.
Your parameters are three point, three point, three and a half feet.
That's right, so you want something more than that.
Yeah, I do, yes.
I'm telling you, we're not going to give you what six feet that you want.
Okay.
So come back with something that you think is reasonable, that you're comfortable with, and we'll examine it.
Okay, all right, five and a half feet. Like I, but, but, okay, all right.
If you want to be successful, I think you should be more reasonable.
I, okay, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, any, any opposed? Then that motion carries, it's adjourned to December ninth. Okay, that brings us to item number two, which has previously been adjourned, and now item three, thirty-three Schoolhouse Lane. Come up. Good evening, you're still under oath? This is an application for beekeeping.
Yes.
I think the last time we were here, I, I suggested that you bring some information or someone that could talk about beekeeping on a small lot like you have here.
Yes, sir.
Are you able to do that?
I believe I was able to do that. I have invited a, a jurist from the Hudson Valley Natural Beekeepers, and I'll let him come on up front and introduce himself, and hopefully, he'll answer your questions and satisfy any of your concerns.
Okay, very good. Is that microphone broken on the, oh, no, okay.
Hello?
Okay, have a seat. State your name.
Grozinger Robert, G R O E Z I N G E R.
Do you swear and affirm that your testimony you provide will be true to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay, help me understand about beekeeping on a small suburban lot.
It's no different than beekeeping on a large commercial lot.
If you could pull the microphone a little closer, I think.
I'll sit closer. Does this work?
Yeah.
Excellent. So it's no different than on a large commercial lot. You have a box, you have two boxes, the bees live inside the box. They leave the box, they come back, they do whatever they do, and they get on with their lives. Bees travel, foragers travel up to three miles. So the concept of livestock as a bee with a five-acre zoning kind of defies the, the common logic that that bee will be contained like a cow, or like a horse, or like a pig in a five-acre lot. Bees forage up to three miles, and that means they can cover about eighteen thousand acres for one bee.
Tell me a little bit about, in a suburban setting, the relationship between bees and neighbors.
Okay, so I manage two hives in New York City on my mother's property. She has a postage stamp lot, it's, it's twenty by ninety, and the house takes up a portion of that twenty by ninety. And I have two hives on there. And if I wouldn't tell people there were bees, they would never know they're bees. So it's, it's, it's the same thing here, you have two boxes, the box is, you know, one sits over the other. They sit out in the back, and that's what they do, and the bees come and the bees go. They're not like yellow jackets, they're not aggressive, they're not like wasps. They, they can sting, if, if, if you annoy them, they will annoy you. They don't sting repeatedly, but that, that's what bees do, that's how they protect themselves. On a small urban lot, it's no different. Like I say, they don't forage. I have some people who want to plant wildflowers in front of their house to make it look nice and to help the bees. Unfortunately, that's not realistic, because bees don't forage like by just going outside and coming back in. So even a five-foot, a five-acre zoning defies the logic of the bee biology. They don't forage within that five miles.
Have you had an opportunity to visit Mr. Hinckley's?
I have not.
Okay.
He contacted me about ten days ago.
Okay, why don't you describe your property, and then I may have some questions as it relates to, to that.
Well, it's a small residential lot on a corner, on a curve. There's a middle school in my backyard. There's a daycare across the street. I've lived there for thirty-five years, and I don't know what else you're looking for.
So I think where Mr. Hinckley would be placing the box, how far from the roadway would it be?
All right, well, I would place the box behind my house.
Oh, okay.
So from the road, about forty feet, I'm not really sure.
Okay, so is there a fence that, that blocks your, your backyard?
Yes.
Okay, and so it would be behind that?
It would be, the fence is my neighbor's fence, so it would be on my side, obviously, my side of the.
Okay.
Yeah, but along that fence line, yeah.
Okay, and.
As shown in the photograph.
How far from where the box, where the bee hive would be, is your neighbor's house?
That question came up last time, I don't know, fifty, seventy-five feet?
Okay, in, in your mind, is that an issue at all?
You could actually limit the flight path of the bees. You could put a, for lack of a better term at this point in time, you could put up a stockade fence on the left, and you could put a stockade fence up on the right, and limit their entryway into the hive, as opposed to them coming from the left or coming from the right, and kind of just forcing them down a runway.
Okay, is that something you, you can accommodate?
If that would satisfy you, certainly.
And it doesn't have to be that high, because the entrance to the box is down low, notwithstanding the fact that the box is this high.
So a funnel in it?
Basically, a barrier here, a barrier here, and then they come in this way.
Okay, all right.
And he has a fence, he said, behind it, so that's not an issue either.
Art?
No, very interesting, no questions, thank you.
Phil's?
I have no questions.
Larry?
You know, what is the incidence of unprovoked bee attacks on people?
Bee attacks?
Stinging.
Unprovoked? I've never heard of an unprovoked. I, I can't, I can't ima, I mean, we're not down in Texas where we have the aggressive bees with the African eyes.
From my understanding, if the, if the, excuse me, if the hive is molested, the bees will get upset. But otherwise, they're not, they're very docile.
I mean, I've had a bear come on my property, and then I've let them sit for a couple of days, and I let them settle in. I mean, granted, I, I go out without protective equipment, but they, they were a little ornery, because they're, they were disturbed, but I'm picking up the hive, separating out the hive, so I'm basically molesting the, but other than that, they, they were fine.
So if the bee, bees go across another property, and by accent or intentionally, a human-like comes in contact with them, is that perceived as a threat?
That, you're asking, you're asking me to envision something that I find impossible. I mean, how do you come in, how do you come in contact with a bee? Like, my argument is, it's like coming in contact with a fly. I don't know if I'm going to come in contact with a bee.
People come in contact with flies?
Understood, that's what I'm saying.
Flies in people's mouths?
Understand, yellow jackets go into people's soda and drink. I, I can't answer that question, because I, I wouldn't know the possibilities. I wouldn't know the circumstances.
Are you saying there is no possibility?
No, I, I can't, I can't, I can't deny the existence of a possibility.
So there's a possibility?
That's what I just said, yes.
That's all for now.
Yeah, Tony?
I think when you testified, you were talking two boxes, right?
That's correct.
Right, I'm sorry.
About how many bees are we talking about?
Depends on the time of year, height of the season, depending on how good the beekeeper is, depending on how good you are. In the Northeast, you're generally limited, maybe twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand. Now, in fairness, also, the first two weeks of their lives, the, the bees don't go out of the hive. They have duties that are assigned to them genetically, socially, empirically, in the hive, and then as the bees get older, they go out and forages, the ones that are old and vulnerable and die, get swallowed up by praying mantises or whatever they do. Those are the ones that go out.
And the hive that you referenced, your mother's, I think?
Yeah.
Is that similar to what we're talking about?
They're all, they're all similar. They're all one box where the bees live, and another box on top where they create their honey, so that they have something to live on, arguably.
And then how, what's the, what would the estimated quantity of bees be?
About, about the same.
About the same?
About the same, yeah. And then down, you know, it's, and I don't know where they even forage in the city, but I have an acquaintance who's got them on an old Masonic Lodge, on the roof of an old Masonic Lodge, about ten blocks away. And I know they cross, because by definition, they cross. And I know that they're fighting for a lot of the same resources, because in the. And I know that they're fighting for a lot of the same resources, because in the city of New York, there aren't that many resources that they can actually have. Not like, not like up here, we have a little bit more.
The hustle and bustle.
Yeah, exactly correct, there's no subway to get them there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Gates, I was woefully incorrect when I gave that estimate last month, when we asked that similar question. Does that satisfy you?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I mean, it could be more, it could be less. I've got some hives now that are dead, because they got robbed out by other bees, you know, or by yellow jackets, so.
Thank you.
Do you have someone, a beekeeper that you know that you can call on as a, you know, a backup beekeeper?
I've offered him my services in case he needs.
And you reside?
I'm in Patterson.
Okay, so it's about, what, forty-five minutes from here?
You're expecting what I would imagine to be something, in your mind, is a bee emergency?
Right.
Of which there is none.
Right.
I mean, I've responded to swarm removal requests and perceived much against my better judgment, where there is no bees anywhere, and they took up residence outside this woman's home, right locally off of, I don't, I don't know where it was, but it's behind Bass.
Delaware.
Every, every year, she says she gets the bees on that same bush. And there's no bees in the area, so they love it, they can smell it from the year before, they all hang out there. I come, I take the box, because for me, it's now brainless, I clip the branch, I drop them in, and off they go. And next year, they'll be back again.
But it's like a forty-five minute ride, I would say, from Patterson.
And the bees don't mind going back with me.
Are you familiar with any other local bee people who would, you know, be closer to you if you had?
I could put him in touch with something. I'm the, I'm basically the communications director for Lycam, if that's a thing, of the Hudson Valley Natural Beekeepers Association, we've got seven hundred and fifty members.
The other thing is, how are you going to deal with keeping predators away from there? You know, bees, raccoons, different animals that, you know, go after bee stuff. You know, especially in our area, bears, there's been a lot of bear sightings lately.
I could answer that for him, if you'd like. You keep the raccoons the same way you keep them out of your trash. How do you keep them out of your trash? Right, so if you have them isolated in a small area, and you have them chained up, that's what happens. Raccoons don't knock over hives. Bears knock over hives, raccoons generally don't knock over hives. Skunks, raccoons, what they come is they knock on the bottom board, the guard bees come out, they snatch them up, they eat them, and then they go away.
Well, are you anticipating maybe putting some sort of fencing around it to keep these critters out?
I would be willing to do that if you insist on that, I don't really see any need for it. But if that's something that you would like to see, I would be glad to go ahead and do that.
And if that's what you wanted, my solution for Mr. Hinckley would be, that in addition to creating that funnel aspect of it, he just puts a piece of wire mesh in front that he can attach to the wood, so therefore, the animal can't go through. Because we know raccoons can climb, so the concept of having a six-foot fence, a ten-foot fence, taking clock over it. A bear's not gonna come on the property.
But you were saying you were going to have something so that the bees can take flight up, rather than go in G and A.
No, 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 just funnel them in. Imagine the hive is right here, and this is one wall, and that's another wall, and you force them this way, as opposed to them coming here, them coming there. So if they wanna get to your name sign, they've gotta come down this, this road here, as opposed to just flying it from left, right, and any of it. It acts as an air traffic control.
I had thought that there was something where people would put, for lack of a better word, some sort of fence, so that the bees, when they came out, would go over and stay up so that they're not on your per, they're not low enough to really disturb your close by neighbors.
Well, if they're coming straight out, they're flying into his house from boy, I understand that landscape.
And how are you going to dispose of the waste that bees make?
I'm not sure there is any waste that the bees make, I think they make honey.
Yeah, and if there is waste, if there wooden frames, the frames get recycled by putting them in the trash, because it's wood.
Right, your old wax, your.
That's get recycled like anything else. I mean, I personally don't use plastic frames, but plastic frames get recycled in their own way.
I plan on using the wooden frames.
And you might even consider, you know, a way to recycle the wax, I mean, I recycle wax, so you never know.
Tony?
No questions for me.
Alright, go ahead.
So, and your handout says, if a neighbor contacts you with a problem while you're away, what would be a problem that would necessitate the calling of a beekeeper?
I don't know, I've never had that situation, and I manage a hundred hives.
Well, it's in the handout, it says if a neighbor contacts.
It's not my handout.
It's a handout from Cornell regarding suburban beekeeping.
Oh, is this, oh, gotcha. It's an Emma Mullins, an Emma Mullins special. I don't see an emergency, what I think what she means is by an emergency is, I can't even imagine, I can't even think of what she would mean by an emergency.
Why would there be a provision to have a beekeeper on call for an issue if there's never any issue that would need to be addressed by the beekeeper?
Well, let me give you the best example. I manage close to a hundred hives for twenty-seven clients. I don't own the hives, the clients own the hives. I only get called after the fact, and that after the fact is, we had a bear, and now we have to put up an electric fence. And that's out of a hundred hives in three counties. I can't see of an emergency. And I'm not being facetious, I just, I can't see of an emergency. You know, that's like saying you're having, you have your water running, and you have to call a neighbor to let you know that there's a plumber available, because there could be a plumbing emergency. What plumbing emergency could you envision? I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to think of what she wrote, what, you know, what she did that.
It says have a backup beekeeper on call.
That's, that's not that hard to do.
But it must be a reason for it.
Yeah, but now you're asking me to guess what somebody else is saying, I can't.
Well, this is, this just, this just isn't anybody.
It's somebody at Cornell who gets paid to put out a pamphlet. That's all I can tell you. And I know if it was put out by Emma Mullins, I know Emma quite well, and she's not there anymore, but.
So if you were doing this pamphlet, you would have left that section out?
At one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Yeah, I have one too after.
Alright.
Really? Ben asked yours first, I'd love to hear it.
Oh, I wanted to know what your training is and your background to consider, you know?
Okay, so I've kept bees, I can't tell you how many years. I am a member of the American Association of Professional Apiculturalists, I'm a member of the Eastern Apicultural Society, I'm a member of the Empire State Honey Producers Association, I am a member of the Eastern Apicultural Society, I'm the communications director for the Hudson Valley Beekeepers Association, and I'm one published paper away from being certified as a master beekeeper by the University of Montana.
Thank you.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Would it be safe to assume, which is probably the best word in the world, that there are not a lot of honeybee attacks in this country, since they're pretty docile?
I.
I mean, in your experience, in your reading.
As I said before, I can't, honeybee attack, no. I mean, I get stung repeatedly. And I actually get stung when I go into a hive.
You're irritating the heck out of them, yeah.
Right, and I'm not wearing any, and I don't wear any personal equipment.
But for the most part.
No.
And again, I've seen, I don't keep bees, but I've, you know, I know some people that have, when I was a little bit younger. Anything can happen. This report is like when they advertise medicine on TV, they're gonna give you all the problems, all the mortis, right? It doesn't mean it's going to happen, you know? Take an aspirin, it could kill you, take a Tylenol, it could kill you.
It's like I don't tell clients to put up a bear fence, I don't need them spending money needlessly, but you know, if you have a bear attack, there's a risk you take.
I mean, you know, I've, I've run into lots of bees, mostly the yellow jacket ones that don't really like people.
And yellow jackets aren't bees.
Right, but I've never had a problem with honeybees, and we could whatev all day.
And that's why it's difficult for me to answer a question, I can't, I can't. I know from my own personal experience, and that's all I can talk to folks about.
But I think this, like you say, is written to cover every theoretical aspect.
It's written by somebody at Cornell who has a job in the extension portion.
Exactly, they're getting paid to write this kind of stuff. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I'll note for the record, there was a letter from a neighbor who had some concerns. I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? Alright, I don't see any hands raised. Then I'll, unless anyone has an objection, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, and again, you can wait till the end of the meeting, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning.
Thanks for the invite. Can you say that again, please?
You can wait till the end of the meeting, all the interesting things that are gonna go on the rest of the meeting, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Sure thing.
Thanks for the invite. Mr. Grace, thank you for the school card.
No problem, anytime, take one for posterity.
I'll get an autograph.
That brings us to item number four, fifteen Kendry Road. Did you state your name?
Frank Sirido.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you'll provide is true to the best of your ability?
Yes.
Alright, why don't you describe your application?
So I'm looking for a ten-foot variance on the north side of my property to extend my carport and enclose it into a garage.
Okay, and the carport's existing?
Yes.
And you wanna extend it, does this extension encroach any further in the side lot line?
No, just straight back.
Okay. Art?
No questions right now. Oh, wait. No, go ahead, I'll wait.
Well, just refresh my recollection, did you, were you previously granted a variance to?
Yeah, two thousand and one.
Okay, just to enclose it or to extend it also?
To enclose it, do exactly what I wanna do. Extend it back and enclose it, but I just, the time didn't have the money to do it, and so I didn't do it.
Okay, has anything significantly changed in the neighborhood since that time?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm sorry, Phil's?
How many cars will this carport be able to house?
Maybe four? Maybe four cars? It depends, it's, depending on the size of the car. If I have my truck in there, then I'm probably three. It's not gonna be that deep.
Routinely, there are how many cars in front of the house?
In front of the house?
Yeah, I went by Sunday, yesterday.
Okay.
And it was clear why you wanted something?
Yeah.
Because there were a number of cars, I just, how many cars were?
Yeah, my son was home from college too, so his car was there, his girlfriend's car was there. So, yeah, I have quite a few cars, I have, it could be like four cars, five cars there.
And you're gonna leave the front open with the back enclosed?
I'm gonna have a garage door in the front.
Garage door, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, no further questions.
Art? Thanks. Is there, excuse me, do you have a driveway to get into this, or?
Yes.
So that whole?
Is it? Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone on Zoom? You can raise your hands or unmute yourself. And I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, and likewise, you can either wait till the end of the meeting, or call the zoning administrator in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number five, forty-four Locrange Avenue. If you'd state your names.
Good evening, I'm John Sullivan, this is Giovanni Alardi, applicant owner for Spectro PK.
Do you swear, do you swear and affirm that the testimony you'll provide is true to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe the application?
So, we had an application in front of the planning board last month, and we were, received conditional approval for the amended site plan portion of this for the outdoor dining. So the outdoor dining does not, is not permitted in the setback, and that's why we're here this evening. There's twelve tables, they're, each of have two seats.
Six tables.
Six tables, sorry, twelve seats, six tables, twelve seats. It's located on the elevated walkway on the Locrange and Fairmont side, and that's why we're here this evening.
Does it increase the capacity of your establishment at all?
Not by like code or anything like that, but yes, if people.
Well, I know, but it's not exceeding your capacity?
It gives people, it gives people the choice to sit outside during the warmer months, it's.
And it's fair to say it doesn't in any way expand the area of your establishment, correct?
No.
Art? Just, that's a fairly narrow sidewalk, how?
It's five feet, and the tables are two foot. So it's a three-foot passageway, it meets ADA, it meets, there's, you know, five-foot turning areas, so it meets ADA requirements.
And you would limit it just to two seats, right? So if you want the walkway. They can only fit two seats, the tables that we have. So there's, it's got enough room for a wheelchair to pass by on both sides, because it's only three tables on one side, and then three tables, because it's like a corner, so, three and three, so. Okay, thank you.
Phil's?
I have no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Go ahead.
Are you just looking for warmer months, or like heating for?
Just the warmer months, they're going inside now.
Okay, no questions.
When I drove by, I saw there were tables out there, is that the location where you would be putting them?
Yeah, it's, it's on like the, it's not on like town property, it's on the, our property.
Thank you.
Okay, and the tables that you have outside, are they identical to the size you wanna put there if you get the variance?
Those are the tables, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment? You can either raise your hand or unmute yourself. I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. And again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sunset Avenue, is someone here for that application?
Hi, this is Amy Bomberdery, I'm here for Sunset.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you provide is true to the best of your ability?
I do.
Alright, why don't you describe the application?
It's a proposed subdivision, five lots for Habitat for Humanity, and the number of lots can't exceed five the way it is now. It's considered a major subdivision, and there's a provision in the town code that if a major subdivision is adjacent to a previously developed property, it requires a hundred-foot rear yard setback. And we, we don't have that. There's also a requirement that there be twenty-five feet of vegetation planted. We are proposing vegetation in the rear yard, but it's not, it's not a full one hundred feet, or twenty-five feet, I'm sorry.
Are you able?
So we need a.
Oh, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So it's the two variances, it's the twenty-five-foot vegetative barrier and the hundred-foot rear yard setback.
Are you able to pull up the diagram, the drawings?
Yes.
And share your screen?
Yep.
Okay, you should be able to now.
See it? Okay, so it's this parcel here, the rear yard is, I believe that's thirty feet, and we're proposing a tree line, it's also fairly wooded. So there'll be a fair amount of vegetation existing that we won't disturb. There is, the adjacent house is approximately seventy-five feet, that's here, seventy-five feet between, and you can see a fairly substantial elevation change, so the existing house is higher. About eighteen feet higher than the proposed house would be.
Okay. Art, do you have any questions?
So this is, this is gonna push into where Sunset Avenue is right away is, the overpass, the overhead wires?
The overhead wires are here, on the north side.
Okay, so we're a little bit, we're a little bit past that, okay.
Yeah, I have a good little scenario. So the existing house we're in question is here. Right here, this one.
I don't see, I can't see any on the screen.
We're looking at the same screen, Amy.
I'm sorry. It won't let me share that.
I think you have to stop sharing this one and then reshare the other.
Well, maybe I can do.
That's okay, I'll pass. So, so this, so this new area is gonna be removed from the houses that are presently on Sunset, right, on that corner? This is gonna be going back into the old Psych Center property?
It's currently on the old parcel, it's not the Psych Center, it's, it's off of Sunset. Sunset Avenue comes like this. And the power lines are right here, so.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, if you would unshare your screen? All right, anyone from Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? Okay, I don't, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
My, my only comment is that that's like a hard neighborhood.
That's the party corner.
That's the part, that's a very busy Marist activity corner. Are the family homes gonna be far enough, far enough away from those?
Yeah, they are fairly far, and the Habitat for Humanity has a model where it has to be owner-occupied, so it can never be rented. It can't be owner-occupied, it goes back to Habitat until Habitat can find somebody else to place there. So it can never be, it can never be a Marist rental, any of the five houses.
Okay, and if need be Habitat would advocate with the families, should the issue ever be too much partying?
Advocate with the, the families on the, the existing owners?
And/or the families?
Um, you mean partying at the Habitat parcels?
No, no. Not the Habitat parcels, not at all, no. I'm assuming that those are families moving into those homes, they're moving into an area that's all rented.
So, they are owner-occupied, Habitat does a lot, well, permit, it's, permit's not the right word, the people who are placed there by Habitat, they physically own the house and the property, and they earn equity, so it would be like any other residential situation where an owner is living in a place.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? All right, anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment? All right, I don't, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I will disconnect.
And finally, that brings us to one twenty-six Innis Avenue, is there someone here for that application?
Good evening, Brandon Petrella with Mori Architects, here for one twenty-six, I'll just share my screen on Zoom.
So do you swear and affirm that the testimony you provide is true to the best of your ability?
I do. Okay, is that up?
Started.
All right, good.
Not yet. Now it is. Okay, why don't you describe the application?
Excellent, so our application is a existing two-story commercial building located on the west side of Innis Ave, just south here of Royal Cove Apartments and Ridge, Ridgefield Apartments. This is a blow-up, I've actually changed the orientation on you a little bit here, north is now to the right. As you can see, again, it's a two-story building, I believe it's about thirty-four hundred square foot in footprint. There's twenty-six parking spaces, and most of the lot is asphalt. There's a small garage here on the northern side. Located to the south side is a single-family residence, to the west side, a single-family residence, to the north side, the town pumping station, and then obviously Innis Avenue on the other side. What we're proposing with this application is to change the use of the building from an office building to seven apartment units. We are proposing, there is a small portion of the existing building that is not two stories, we're proposing to increase that portion to two stories, it's about six hundred square feet, that entire addition will still be encapsulated within the existing footprint. That leads to our first variance, which is requesting a side yard setback variance. So the building currently is three foot one from that, from the rear yard. We would stay three foot one, except it'll just be two stories instead of one story for that small portion. The second variance is the refuse enclosure, refuse enclosures need to be fifty feet away from all residential property lines. We are obviously surrounded by all residential property lines, our lot is a hundred and twenty-five feet by about a hundred and fifty. You offset fifty feet, basically your refuse would be dead center in the middle of the property, that's obviously not very feasible. So what we've proposed in conjunction with the planning board is to put the small refuse enclosure, and again, this won't be a dumpster enclosure, it's gonna be small cans because we have limited apartments at this site. So we'll have the can storage here on the northern side of the site, where there are no residents, there's a town pumping station. So we feel like that would, one, get it out of the way from everybody, allow us to circulate within our site, and also keep it where it wouldn't be a disturbance to anyone. Finally is the third variance, which is the lot area variance. So our parcel is about a half acre, the code requires seven thousand two hundred and sixty square feet per unit. With our half acre, we're actually only providing three thousand fifty square feet per unit, so we're about half shy of where we need to be. That is in kind of keeping with the neighborhood, I'll jump back to the two large apartment buildings, apartment complexes we have just to the north of us. Ridgefield is an eighteen point two acre site, but it's got two hundred and ninety-two units. Divide that out, it's only two thousand seven hundred and fifteen square feet per unit, our density is better than that. Royal Cove, eighteen point five acres, two hundred and eighty-eight units, two thousand eight hundred square feet per unit. Our density is better than that, it's up at three thousand, but they're all very similar, none of them are within that seven thousand two hundred and sixty square foot. The other thing that this does, changing this to an apartment building, is it brings it more in conformance with the code. An office complex is not permitted in the residential multifamily zone, obviously multifamily is. The other thing it also helps us do is it really reduces the impact on the site, we don't need nearly as many parking spaces, and we were able to convert a good portion of that, so we reduced it down to fifteen parking spaces, and we were able to take all that additional asphalt and change that into a small yard area. I'll just go through real quick here, you guys can see the existing building. Again, not a lot of changes to the outside of the building, we're gonna add a few windows for bedrooms and to get natural light into the space, but otherwise the architecture will stay the same. Floor plan, the building is basically comprised of a couple, I'll call them quadrants, due to the bearing walls that are already in the building. So on the first floor, you'll get three apartments, one in each quadrant, a little common area in the other. On the second floor, we have three apartment units, and then a fourth in that second floor addition that we're discussing. This is the elevations, again, not many changes, I would like to point out the only thing that is changing, again, for that variance for the side yard are the areas in green. There is the, the one single-family residential property that has the setback. There currently in this area are two doors, one here, one here, there's four sets of windows, one up here, 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 and actually, we're missing one here, now, two of those windows are currently closed, but there are windows in those locations. We're actually eliminating three of those openings, and we're not proposing any windows on our addition at all towards that direction, towards the side yard. We're also eliminating the fire escape stairs, so actually reducing the impact this building has on the neighboring property, even though it is within that, that setback. That's the project.
Do you know when the, the building was built?
I don't, I'd have to look back, I'm sure I have it documented.
I don't have any questions, Art?
So, looking at the, the plan right now, to the right of the building, to my right of the building, that's gonna be lawn, now you're gonna take up the blacktop?
All of the blacktops coming up, we're using it as recreational area for our occupants, it will all be a ceded lawn area. There's a small portion here, which will be concrete, that we're making a grilling area.
Okay, and you're gonna have, looks like plantings, is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, actually, I'll just kinda, right now, the owner has already taken upon himself to plant the entire perimeter of it, so there is plantings all across the front, and those plantings come across the back here now, they exist today, actually, he went a little too much and planted in some areas, we have to take some back out.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
Phyllis?
Are the apartments accessible?
The lower floor, so we will have three accessible apartments. So, two of the apartment, the ones on the upper floors are not going to be, we don't have elevator service to the building, so I'll jump to the floor plan here. There's two apartments that have interior access from the lobby area here on the first floor, so this would be in the lower left as you were looking at the plan. We are also proposing a handicap ramp here on the north side of the building to give this last apartment on the first floor also accessibility. It has its own entrance to accomplish that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you, is this gonna be market, what do you call it, market rate? What type of apartments are you gonna be, who, who are you planning on renting?
Yeah, this is not, it won't be, it'll be market rate, not low income or anything, it'll just be regular rental apartments.
Thank you.
Larry?
No que, no questions.
Tony? Could you go back to the previous picture?
The fencing that exists, is that the resident next to it, or is that?
This back here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I believe is on our property, let me just double-check, yeah, that, that's along our property, it matches the fencing that you'll actually, you can kinda see, goes along here between the large, we're not, no changes to any of that fencing.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
No questions.
Tony?
Just to reinforce something, you had an earlier rendering up there, you're not gonna have any windows on, on the, what would be the west side of that structure?
There will not be any windows in our new addition portion of it, and I'm closing up a few on that side.
Okay, so, so nothing in a new addition, and you also have a door back there, what's the, what's the purpose of that?
That door is removed.
That, that door is gonna be removed, and the other existing windows, are they gonna be removed as well?
No, some of them will have to remain for the light invent, in those, there's bedrooms and living areas in those spaces.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you know how long the building's been vacant?
It's been several years now. Yeah, it was, there was, I can't remember if it was an OPWDD or who it was that was in there, but it's, it's been quite a while. I don't know the exact date, but it's, it's been a little bit, we actually did work for them originally on this building before the new owner took over, who else, who happens to be a client of ours.
Okay, anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Why don't you come on up one at a time? If you'd state your name?
Good evening, Joseph Tippa.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you provide is true to the best of your ability?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Tippa, you submitted a, a letter?
Yes.
With some drawings?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be made part of the record, is there something you wanna say in addition to, to supplement your letter?
Uh, yeah, I don't wanna lose my privacy, and this is gonna take everything away from my privacy, and I just doesn't, you know, just doesn't make sense to bring something in here, we have two apartment complexes there with five hundred apartments, and they're bringing in another apartment, uh, building.
Okay, how long have you lived? You were at seven?
Seven, I'm in place.
How long have you lived there?
I've been here for twenty-eight years.
Any, any questions?
Could we go back to a picture so I could envision where his home is, is that doable? Thank you.
Would the site plan be good, or would you like the aerial here?
The aerial, for me, is better.
Why don't you let him finish, and then you can come up?
So which houses?
Which numbers are you, please?
Can you, if you look over at that screen over there?
Yeah, I'm seven, I would be on the west side.
In the back? It is, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And your home is where, out of the picture, is that, or is it?
Mine's out of the picture.
On the top, I think.
Oh, you see it, on the.
She showed me, yes, okay.
But they're right on my property, we're talking three feet, one inch.
Right.
You know, and all the privacy, I've got great grandchildren come over on the weekends, they swim in a pool, they play, I don't need people, you know, looking down on these kids, especially with windows there, we lose total privacy. Got a beautiful patio, I mean, I just, just is inconceivable to live like that.
Okay, and you wanna come up, anything else you wanna say?
I'll be honest, she'll probably.
She'll have one more, okay. Why don't you come on up? State your name.
Jacqueline Tippa.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you'll provide is to the best of your ability?
Yes, oh, should I sit here?
If you're comfortable.
So, like, the photo is not really accurate, because I now have a pool that's been there for, I don't know, three, four years. And, so if you can pull up here, let me slide over here, if you can pull up the other picture, to where you see the back where the windows are being replaced? My pool is literally fifteen feet from the building. Yeah, so you see the, the bottom diagram with the, what, half windows there? In all thirty years that we've been there, they've never been open, so now he's gonna open up those windows. Here's my pool, here's the window, the windows. Where is the privacy, and why do you need all these apartments here? Behind my house, there's like ten vacant ones, you know what I'm saying, I don't understand. They're not renting in, what is it called?
One thirty-four Innis.
One thirty-four Innis, there's so many vacancies in there, they can't even rent them out. And then you wanna add on to it? It just doesn't make any sense to me. I can't have my grandkids out in the back. Who knows who's gonna, I already, he already told me who he wants to rent it to, but that's neither here nor there. But how many apartments are in there?
Seven.
Seven, how many are they, one, two bedrooms, what are they?
They're one-bedroom apartments.
One bedroom, so what if there's seven people to a one-bedroom, that's good? What if he has, it's a one-bedroom, but what if you have seven people living in a one-bedroom, is that okay?
I don't think that enters into our analysis about his variance request.
I just don't, I just don't see how where this even is acceptable. In all the years we've lived there, it's always been offices with never any problems.
Well, how did, how did you man, I'm sorry, Paul.
Go ahead.
How was it when the Mental Health Association was in there?
Never, ever had a problem, it's always quiet over there, never, never no problems. The most cars in the parking lot, when it was the Mental Health, maybe ten? Never a problem.
Why would you consider it to be a problem now?
Cause you're putting an addition on?
He's putting a half-story.
Okay, but thirty, thirty years, we've never had people living there, half the time the building was vacant. What do you need more apartments for, people can't even afford to live in the other apartments, he's gonna rent these out?
That's not our concern.
I understand that, there's no space between the property, it's his building, our property, there's no, where's the, what do you call it, variance?
Setback?
Setback, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's, so their application is generated because. Yeah, that's, so their application is generated because they're gonna make an addition, if they, if they were not increasing the height of the building in that one little section, they wouldn't need a variance, or they probably wouldn't need a variance, because it's not, no other part of the building is changing.
I understand that, so there's a five foot fence, so you're outside now playing next to the apartments, and you have a whole bunch of people there, no, like, how does that even happen, where's my privacy?
And these photographs that you submitted with, um...
Yes.
Mr. Tippa's application?
Yes.
They fairly and accurately represent the back, your backyard?
That is my backyard. Taken the other day.
You have that?
No.
Would it, um, wasn't in your packet, it would've been delivered.
Can I say something?
I got this somewhere.
So, would you want that in your backyard? It's just, I'm just asking.
It's a building, it's a building where people live.
It's not a building where people live, that's an office building.
It's really no different than having a house in your backyard with windows looking on your property.
I, I don't have windows looking into my backyard right now, those windows have been closed for 30 years.
Was there something else you wanted to say, sir?
No, I just, no, I just, no.
Okay, and was there somebody else who wanted to come up and talk? Okay, why don't you come on up? Why don't you state your name?
Uh, Joseph Rogers, I live at, uh, 124 Innis Avenue, adjacent to the Bricklayers Union, the old Bricklayers Union. My house is, the house that's, you see right next to the Bricklayers, we share the same fence and whatnot, and they wanna put seven apartments in there, with kids, and more parking there, I don't see where that is, is gonna cut into my privacy, you know, I got, uh, four people living in our house, plus my wife and I, so six people, this is upstairs and downstairs, and, uh, I don't see where, you know, where it's going to be, you know, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of noise and whatnot there, in a quiet neighborhood that's been quiet for many years, even when the Bricklayers Union owned the building, and then they moved out, and then, uh, Peoples Inc. moved in there, and we had no problems with that, and there wasn't a lot of parking of cars in their parking lot there, and they wanna make like a, a, a grassy area in there, and put in seven apartments in there, it's gonna be hectic in there, you know, it's gonna be a lot of noise and everything and whatnot there, in a private neighborhood, I lived there since 2005, in that house, right alongside the fence.
Okay. Any questions, sir?
You have a question?
If, if I'm looking at this picture?
That's not his.
Oh, then I can ask.
The picture's on the, uh, on the screen there, is that tall building to the left? I'll point it out.
You'll wait?
Right here, my house, that's my house, right there.
We got it.
That's Bricklayers next door.
Sir?
Yes.
Is any of the window replacement, 'cause some of these, when I look at, the architect talked about opening up windows, is any of that gonna impact your home?
Oh, well, he's gotta bring up the, uh, thing there that shows the windows.
So you're located on the south, that would be here?
Yes.
There'd be a new window in that location.
So in the other left hand corner?
In the bottom pic?
Yep.
Bottom left.
On the lower left elevation.
Lower left.
We are proposing one window up there as well.
Ah, okay, okay.
I just don't, I don't like the idea that they're gonna put seven apartments in that little building, and, and it's gonna have children there, or not more parking, and everything's going to be a lot noisier when it was a quiet, uh, neighborhood to begin with, ever since the Bricklayers were sitting there, and when, uh, Peoples Inc. took over the building, it was fine, there was no, nothing about a playground, grassy area, and apartments, several apartments, I, I don't see, see that.
Okay, and let me ask you this, have any of you been before the planning board to express your?
Next week.
Next week?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are other concerns you can bring to the planning board regarding, um, your concerns about privacy, and they may be able to mitigate some of those concerns. Okay? Did anyone else have any questions? Sure, come on up.
If this should go through construction now, this is going to go on my property, they're three feet away, they're gonna do construction work on my property too, using my property, I'm saying.
Hey, I wouldn't think that you're gonna, you're gonna go on their property, so...
How would they put it on, I'm saying?
I, I think that you would have a cause of action if they did come onto your property without your permission, so...
Thank you.
Yes.
Persuading these pictures, these are, could I ask them a question or two?
Sure, why don't you come on up again?
So say this does go through, like, what type of, um, privacy fence can we have put up, 'cause right now, it's only like five foot.
Okay, so I think that's something you can speak to the planning department about, your concerns about privacy. She has some questions about some of the photographs that you submitted.
So, behind, it looks like behind your house?
Yeah.
Is that, are those apartment complexes?
Yep, those are, and they're all, just about, there's three empties over there.
Okay. But otherwise, they're pretty rented, and so what you have between you and them is just vegetation.
Right, so when it's springtime, summer, you can't even see them, right now it's fall, so there's nothing on the trees.
Okay, okay, um, and then there's a picture of the fire escape, it's gonna be removed, and how, how have you managed the fire escape all this time?
It's just been there.
Okay.
Falling apart, it's missing pieces already.
So that would be a good thing, that it was removed?
That doesn't bother, it's not even my concern, my concern is people living over there.
Okay.
Lack of privacy, they're gonna be outside, I'll be in my pool with my grandkids, and they're just gonna be outside hanging out, no, I have a problem with that.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I understand.
I'm confused, it looks as if the building itself, right, there's no green space there, that's not where they're gonna be...
Do you see the end of it, that's where it's all gonna be?
But this is, this is the bricklayer stuff, this is...
Yeah, it's all open, that's all open, that's all concrete, that's all parking space.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
Yeah, no.
Anyone else?
Paul, I've got a question for the architect.
Okay.
These are gonna be one bedroom apartments?
Correct, seven one bedroom apartments.
So you would have to meet the criteria of how many people can be in a one bedroom apartment, otherwise be violating?
Yeah, if there's local statutes for that, absolutely, I mean, I'll be honest with you, the intent of the owner with a one bedroom apartment is to keep it simple for rental, you know, not have children, I mean, that's, you know, it's just easier as a landlord to not have those things.
Exactly, so, again, as our zoning administrator said, there are pretty strict rules for how many people can live in a one bedroom.
And he would be responsible to make sure that those rules are followed, I mean, ultimately is the property owner, um, I will, the only thing I will say is I'm very cognizant of the neighborhood, and I understand the comments that were given tonight, and I don't want to belittle any comments that were made tonight, but windows on that wall could be opened or closed at any time, as long as they met building code, that, I understand that they've had, they've enjoyed the privacy of a vacant building, um, but we're trying to actually change it to a residential building, which is what belongs in the area, um, and that's why we were tried to be as delicate with that west wall, because of how close it is to the neighboring property, not put additional windows in it, and try to limit it to the greatest extent that we could, we've eliminated exits from that side and windows, so, we are cognizant of those concerns, and we knew there would be concerns.
So, if I may?
I'll leave it at that.
If I may, and I need to ask this of, probably our zoning administrator, if someone chose to come in there and knock that building down, they could put a house there?
Yes.
With multiple number of children and windows all around the house?
Yes.
That would be their legal right, so there's really not a whole lot of difference, now that this is gonna be an apartment complex.
Yeah, it's three and a half feet of property line, but yes, if they were to knock it down, then they would have to meet the setbacks.
Right, but there's still be windows looking directly out onto the other property?
Yep.
No more questions, I'm good.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody? Um, if you'd unshare your screen, we'll see if there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this? Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself? All right, I don't see anyone? Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, see the word by I?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Okay? And then I'm gonna move, uh, that we take a 10 minute break, and adjourn until, well, say like 7:25.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, see the word by I?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any opposed? That motion carries.
We catch the part. We have some talk about.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody? If you'd unshare your screen, we'll see if there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. All right, I don't see anyone. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. And then I'm going to move that we take a 10-minute break and adjourn until, well, we'll say like 7:25.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
We catch the part. We have some talk about.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody? If you'd unshare your screen, we'll see if there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. All right, I don't see anyone. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. And then I move that the ZBA determine this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And Sonia, I'm signing the form. Okay, and then we need an area variance to get away from the five-acre requirement. So if you want to make a motion to grant a 4.78 acre variance, and there is a staff report.
The staff report addresses the substantial and addresses the, one second, I just lost my place. It doesn't necessarily talk about the impact to the community, but I don't think there are any. And it, basically it says for the board to rely on its study for whether any alternatives exist. Substantially numerically, but other than setting a precedent for other potential beekeepers, it's unclear whether the impact would be considered substantial. Unlikely to have an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions. In fact, honeybees have beneficial environmental impacts and, yes, self-created, but that doesn't preclude the granting of the variance.
Okay. So in that case, Art, do you want to make a motion for the area variance?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item one.
Uh, three.
Three, that's close. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
No, but it's staff report.
Staff report. So moved.
And the condition? Will the condition get attached to the variance or to the special use permit?
It was going to attach it to the special use permit, but-
For the barrier?
I'm sorry?
For the barrier, right? That-
I thought the condition would be for the special use permit.
That's fine. And who's in on the motion?
Art and Phyllis.
Thank you.
All those in favor for the area variance, granting a smaller area to have a beekeeping. All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. And then, Phyllis, do you mind doing the special use permit? There is a staff report that I think covers that, and then I would add a condition that the applicant consult with an expert in determining or in creating a funnel-like effect to direct the bees away from the neighbor's property in conformity with best practices for beekeeping.
Funnel what?
In conformity with best practices for beekeeping.
Effect, okay, thank you. Sorry. I move that the, I move to approve the request for a special use permit as set forth in item number three. This decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearings, the result of site visits set by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code. The approval of this special use permit is subject to the following condition: that the applicant consult with a bee expert to create a funnel effect to meet with the best practices for beekeeping.
And implemented.
And implemented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that passes 7-0. Good luck.
Hope you get lots of honey.
Next is, you're Kinney Road, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the next is item number four. This is, this is an area variance, he needs a 10-foot variance to extend and enclose a carport. There's been a previous granting of the application, it's not done, and I would point out that the extension encroaches no further into the side yard setback from the existing building. Does anybody have any concerns about this one?
Nope.
Then let me offer these findings. What an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of variance. This is consistent with other dwellings in the area, other properties in the area, and in fact has limited impact in any change. And whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant other than the area variance, based upon the location of the carport and the width of the lot, it's impossible to do this without an area variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps mathematically, but because this is just an extension of an existing structure, its impact is minimal. And there's no evidence that there'll be any physical or environmental impact in the neighborhood, and although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. And Larry, if you don't mind making that motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance as set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered at the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And Sonia, I'm signing the form. Okay, and then we need an area variance to get away from the five-acre requirement. So if you want to make a motion to grant a 4.78 acre variance, and there is a staff report.
The staff report addresses the substantial and addresses the, one second, I just lost my place. It doesn't necessarily talk about the impact to the community, but I don't think there are any. And it, basically it says for the board to rely on its study for whether any alternatives exist. Substantially numerically, but other than setting a precedent for other potential beekeepers, it's unclear whether the impact would be considered substantial. Unlikely to have an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions. In fact, honeybees have beneficial environmental impacts, and yes, self-created, but that doesn't preclude the granting of the variance.
Okay. So in that case, Art, do you want to make a motion for the area variance?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item one.
Uh, three.
Three, that's close. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
No, but it's staff report.
Staff report. So moved.
And the condition? Will the condition get attached to the variance or to the special use permit?
It was going to attach it to the special use permit, but-
For the barrier?
I'm sorry?
For the barrier, right? That-
I thought the condition would be for the special use permit.
That's fine. And who's in on the motion?
Art and Phyllis.
Thank you.
All those in favor for the area variance, granting a smaller area to have a beekeeping. All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. And then, Phyllis, do you mind doing the special use permit? There is a staff report that I think covers that, and then I would add a condition that the applicant consult with an expert in determining or in creating a funnel-like effect to direct the bees away from the neighbor's property in conformity with best practices for beekeeping.
Funnel what?
In conformity with best practices for beekeeping.
Effect, okay, thank you. Sorry. I move that the, I move to approve the request for a special use permit as set forth in item number three. This decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearings, the result of site visits set by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code. The approval of this special use permit is subject to the following condition: that the applicant consult with a bee expert to create a funnel effect to meet with the best practices for beekeeping.
And implemented.
And implemented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that passes 7-0. Good luck.
Hope you get lots of honey.
Uh, next is, you're Kinney Road, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the next is item number four. This is, this is an area variance, he needs a 10-foot variance to extend and enclose a carport. There's been a previous granting of the application, it's not done, and I would point out that the extension encroaches no further into the side yard setback from the existing building. Does anybody have any concerns about this one?
Nope.
Then let me offer these findings. What an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance. This is consistent with other dwellings in the area, other properties in the area, and in fact has limited impact in any change. And whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant other than the area variance, based upon the location of the carport and the width of the lot, it's impossible to do this without an area variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps mathematically, but because this is just an extension of an existing structure, its impact is minimal. And there's no evidence that there'll be any physical or environmental impact in the neighborhood, and although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. And Larry, if you don't mind making that motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance as set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I'm signing the form. Tony, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. So I move the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. So moved.
Staff report.
Staff report.
Set forth by, in the staff report.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries.
Second.
All right, that brings us to Sunset Avenue. Any concerns about this one?
No, I mean, I think the Phyllis' point was that it's going to be really, really close to the party houses, but that's not our problem.
Not our problem, and in fact, it may resolve our problem.
It may. But it's an unused piece of land that's been sitting there idle forever. So, go for it.
Okay. Great. In that case, Lily, do you want to make a motion?
Could I?
Oh, all right.
Was there somebody on this one?
Uh, let me see, is there, okay, there is a staff report.
Yes, there is, okay.
I move that the board approves the request for an area variance as set forth in item six. The decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members, and in the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair and the staff report. So moved.
Just the staff report.
Okay, just the staff.
I didn't make it correct. Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I'm signing the form. Okay, and then we need an area variance to get away from the five-acre requirement. So if you want to make a motion to grant a 4.78 acre variance, and there is a staff report.
The staff report addresses the substantial and addresses the, one second, I just lost my place. It doesn't necessarily talk about the impact to the community, but I don't think there are any. And it, basically it says for the board to rely on its study for whether any alternatives exist. Substantially numerically, but other than setting a precedent for other potential beekeepers, it's unclear whether the impact would be considered substantial. Unlikely to have an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions. In fact, honeybees have beneficial environmental impacts, and yes, self-created, but that doesn't preclude the granting of the variance.
Okay. So in that case, Art, do you want to make a motion for the area variance?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item one.
Uh, three.
Three, that's close. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
No, but it's staff report.
Staff report. So moved.
And the condition? Will the condition get attached to the variance or to the special use permit?
It was going to attach it to the special use permit, but-
For the barrier?
I'm sorry?
For the barrier, right? That-
I thought the condition would be for the special use permit.
That's fine. And who's in on the motion?
Art and Phyllis.
Thank you.
All those in favor for the area variance, granting a smaller area to have a beekeeping. All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. And then, Phyllis, do you mind doing the special use permit? There is a staff report that I think covers that, and then I would add a condition that the applicant consult with an expert in determining or in creating a funnel-like effect to direct the bees away from the neighbor's property in conformity with best practices for beekeeping.
Funnel what?
In conformity with best practices for beekeeping.
Effect, okay, thank you. Sorry. I move that the, I move to approve the request for a special use permit as set forth in item number three. This decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearings, the result of site visits set by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code. The approval of this special use permit is subject to the following condition: that the applicant consult with a bee expert to create a funnel effect to meet with the best practices for beekeeping.
And implemented.
And implemented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that passes 7-0. Good luck.
Hope you get lots of honey.
Uh, next is, you're Kinney Road, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the next is item number four. This is, this is an area variance, he needs a 10-foot variance to extend and enclose a carport. There's been a previous granting of the application, it's not done, and I would point out that the extension encroaches no further into the side yard setback from the existing building. Does anybody have any concerns about this one?
Nope.
Then let me offer these findings. What an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance. This is consistent with other dwellings in the area, other properties in the area, and in fact has limited impact in any change. And whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant other than the area variance, based upon the location of the carport and the width of the lot, it's impossible to do this without an area variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps mathematically, but because this is just an extension of an existing structure, its impact is minimal. And there's no evidence that there'll be any physical or environmental impact in the neighborhood, and although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. And Larry, if you don't mind making that motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance as set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered at the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I'm signing the form. Tony, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. So I move the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
So moved.
Staff report.
Staff report.
Set forth by, in the staff report.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. And I'm signing the form. Tony, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. So I move the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
So moved.
Staff report.
Staff report.
Set forth by, in the staff report.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. All right, that brings us to Sunset Avenue. Any concerns about this one?
No, I mean, I think the Phyllis' point was that it's going to be really, really close to the party houses, but that's not our problem.
Not our problem, and in fact, it may resolve our problem.
It may. But it's an unused piece of land that's been sitting there idle forever. So, go for it.
Okay. Great. In that case, Lily, do you want to make a motion?
Could I?
Oh, all right.
Was there somebody on this one?
Uh, let me see, is there, okay, there is a staff report.
Yes, there is, okay.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance as set forth in item six. The decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members, and in the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, seated by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And finally, that brings us to Innis Garden Apartments. Daniel, any concerns about this one? The neighbors had some privacy concerns, but I don't think that the variance requested, their privacy concerns in any way relate to the variances they're requesting. I think that their privacy concerns are more adequately addressed in the planning stages. So does anyone have any concerns about this one?
Oh, just about the privacy. I mean, if I were them, I guess I wouldn't be too happy either for the privacy aspect and, you know, I would be concerned that they get some kind of screening so that they didn't get prying eyes onto their property, but other than that, I don't know.
They can put that screening up, they have plenty of room to plant shrubbery.
Yeah, what is it, three feet, one inch or something like that?
Yeah, the building's been there for years and years and years.
Yeah.
I'll provide here, so we can put some kind of a, not a fence, but a screen and a tree that would grow higher.
Yeah.
So, the back of the property, unless I'm mistaken, already has a fence, right? And it's in concrete pillars.
Yep.
And then there's wood fence, concrete pillar, wood fence. Could we ask that they maintain that fence? That the developers maintain that fence?
Once again, I think that's a planning issue.
Planning board, okay.
It doesn't have anything to do with these variances.
Okay.
That is my opinion.[686.03]